We'll just do a roll call.
We could.
Yeah, we've done resolution. It's kind of a housekeeping. All right. All right. Good evening. Seeing the hour of six o'clock having arrived, I'll call the Tuesday, October 7th council meeting to order. Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Patrick Singer.
Here.
Greg Mysak. Mike Smith.
Here.
Greg's on the line. Greg, can you hear us?
Here.
Brian Shannon.
Here.
Steve Sayoun.
Here.
Orin Smith.
Here.
Neil Hicks.
And Neil said he would be either late or unable to attend, so we may see him, we may not. All right, next up, we have requests for authorization to waive the 72-hour notice required by City of Whitewater Transparency Ordinance to amend the agenda to add item number 16, which is discussion of possible action to approve police department vehicle purchases.
We have a Neil that might be.
Oh, okay.
Neil, is that you online?
That's okay. There's a Neil Hickel, and we weren't sure if that was a spelling error or another Neil, which is why I just wanted to check to make sure.
Got fingered at wanting to speak. All right, so there's requests to waive the 72-hour notice requirement for agenda item number 16. Is there any action to that request?
Moved to waive.
I second.
All right, moved by Shannon, seconded by Smith M. to waive the 72-hour notice requirement for item number 16. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
All right, that is on the agenda.
Patrick.
I do believe Neil is a aye.
All right, Neil, can you hear us? Brad can keep working on it.
Yeah, can you hear me?
All right, yep, we can hear you.
All right, thanks.
All right. All right, so next up, we have pledge of allegiance. If everybody could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, next up, we have approval of the agenda. Is there any item anybody would like to remove at this time or move around before we take action on approving it? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Couple of swaps. Move number six, MOU with UW parking out to considerations, and then the November 4th, 2025 common council meeting at UW Whitewater, number 11, and resolution number 13, library exception resolution to consent.
What was the first one going to consent? My apologies.
The item number 11, which is just the notice of the November 4th council meeting being on the UW Whitewater campus.
Thank you.
And then number 13 is the library exception resolution, which is kind of a piece of housekeeping.
Mm-hmm.
And then pulling number six, the MOU with UW Whitewater for parking to considerations, and we can take that up after item number 16, if that works.
Well, good to be.
All right, is there a motion then to approve with those changes?
That'll be my motion.
All right. All right, moved by Shannon to approve the agenda with those three alterations, seconded by Sayoun. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is approved. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. We already made some modifications, but if there are any other items anybody wished to pull or add at this time, I would entertain that, or a motion to approve the consent agenda with item number six being removed and items number 11 and 13 being added.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Shannon, seconded by Smith M. to approve the consent agenda. Any further council questions, comments on any of these items? Any public comment on any of the items listed on the consent agenda? All right, Heather, if you'd please read the consent agenda, then please.
Approval of common council meeting minutes from September 16th, 2025, library board of trustees minutes from August 18th, 2025, community development authority meeting minutes from July 17th, 2025, and August 21st, 2025, finance committee meeting minutes from August 26th, 2025, approval to auction fire apparatus and surplus equipment, appointment of Sherry Stanek to the plan and architectural review committee, November 4th, 2025, common council meeting at UW Whitewater, and social media update. Oh, no, sorry, that was not them. 13, the library exception resolution.
All right, any further discussion? All right, since the resolution is on there, we will do a roll call. So Heather, if you please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Sure. Mike Smith.
Aye.
Orin Smith.
Aye.
Greg Mysak. Singer.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, and we'll move on to our next items. We have two proclamations tonight. First up is proclamation for Spanish Heritage Month and then a pedestrian safety proclamation. So John, if you just want to take care of both of those.
Sure, no problem. And thanks for anyone tonight who's joining us for these. The first one is the Spanish-American heritage. So whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the histories, cultures, and contributions of our residents whose roots came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Africa, Central and South America, and many tracing their heritage from the original indigenous peoples of Latin America, and whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, but was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to cover a 30-day period and enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs, and whereas the 2020 U.S. Census estimates that slightly over 14% of Whitewater's population are Hispanic or Latinx residents, and whereas 40% of the students in the Whitewater Unified School District identify as Hispanic, and whereas 9.5% of the students at the University of Whitewater, Wisconsin, identify as Hispanic, and whereas the City of Whitewater joins the rest of the nation in recognizing the unique and vital role in our economy, workforce, education, and faith communities, these Hispanic and Latinx residents contribute. Now therefore, I, John Wydell, City Manager of the City of Whitewater, Wisconsin, do proclaim October 2025 as Spanish Heritage Month in the City of Whitewater, Wisconsin, dated the 7th day of October 2025. Thank you.
And was there anybody you mentioned?
Yes, is there any people wishing to speak?
Some wanted to speak, so come.
We don't have to state our name or anything.
You can introduce yourself.
Okay. So Samuel Carden, Superintendent for Whitewater Unified. Thank you, Common Council President, Mr. Singer, and City Manager, John Wydell, for coming together with us to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It's an awesome space and an awesome night. I also am appreciative of all of the community members, including school personnel and staff and families coming out to celebrate this evening. I wanted to just share quickly, it's a great opportunity when our spaces align in our values in terms of our inclusionary statement, which is the Whitewater Unified School District celebrates and values community. We support and are inclusive of all students, staff, families, and community members. All are welcome and safe in our schools. We take seriously our responsibility to provide safe, non-discriminatory, and inclusive environments for all people. We will continue to stanchly protect the rights of all people. All children will be safe and loved in our schools, every student, every day, in a unified way. So again, just wanted to take a quick minute to thank you for the opportunity to recognize this day as our schools continue to celebrate and embrace the different cultures through the Hispanic Heritage Month that make up our school community. So thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Sam. All right, John, is there anybody else?
No, I don't want to ask anyone else. Okay. I do have a second proclamation. This one is for white cane safety day. And whereas safe, accessible streets are essential for the well-being of all residents, including children, older adults, and people with disabilities, and whereas thousands of Wisconsinites, including over 100,000 with vision loss, rely on sidewalks, curb ramps, accessible pedestrian signals, white canes, and service animals to navigate public spaces safely, and whereas Wisconsin's white cane law requires drivers to stop at least 10 feet from pedestrians using a white cane or service animal, reinforcing the need for driver awareness and pedestrian respect, and whereas communities can reduce injuries and save lives by investing in proven pedestrian safety infrastructure such as high-visibility crosswalks, traffic calming, and accessible design, and whereas raising awareness of pedestrian rights and responsibilities promotes a culture of safety and inclusion for all road users. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, City Manager, John Wydell, on behalf of the residents of the City of Whitewater, do hereby proclaim October as pedestrian safety month at Whitewater, and sorry, Wednesday, October 15th, as white cane safety day in the City of Whitewater, and call on all residents, leaders, and lawmakers to provide safe, accessible streets year-round, dated the 7th day of October 2025. I can't say white without adding water.
All right. Thank you, John, for those. And next up, well, you have the floor still with your city manager report.
And as always, I'll keep it to the highlights because the full manager report is available in the packet and is always sent out to all staff. Brad is transitioning, I will start. In the Department of Public Works, the Vanderlip Pumping Station project is mainly complete, except for some restoration work. Besides the small area, the contractor is working on punch list items. Walworth Avenue is completed. Three areas, Play Street, Jakesway, and Stonefield Drive have been completed and restored for our dredging project this year, and all laterals associated with our lead line service replacement has been completed. Hard service restoration is complete, and the soft restoration work is ongoing. Streets helped out with the Discover Whitewater race and Run for Tray. They also dealt with a traffic signal knockdown, playground repair equipment, and other items. Water Department replaced two fire hydrants on Bluff Road that were also hit by vehicles. And in wastewater, the crews helped clean out a stormwater pipe related to a detention pond on Stonefield Drive, and they're also still dealing with some issues from a storm event. In police, Sabrina Ojibwe led the transition of their dispatch consoles and radios to the new countywide system. Minor tweaks in the coming weeks, but were fully integrated. Many benefits to the system, but communicating directly with Walworth County personnel and other areas of cross-functionality are some of the biggest improvements. PD Supervisory met for a monthly staff meeting, bimonthly staff meeting, and the attorney was also there for a part of it to discuss prosecutorial-related topics. Also, PD staff attended Pick-a-Day Come and Play at Washington Elementary, which is pictured above, and we are also accepting applications for community service officers closing October 10th. Fire and EMS for the week of the 11th through the 17th, we received 53 calls for service or an average of seven and a half per day. Eleven calls required POC response. Average response was one person per call. We requested mutual aid twice, and we were requested once. Also, Fort Atkinson on September 14th requested an ambulance due to both medics being on other calls, and let's see, we also requested to a fourth call for service in La Grange. September 18th through the 24th, 44 calls for service, 6.2 average. Two calls required POC response, and we received one person per. Lot of fire stuff. In the library, the library expansion is wrapping up soon. December 8th is the projected reopening. I know a lot of everyone's been waiting for that date. The library will be closed from October 27th through November 8th. November 10th through December 6th will be curbside pickup services. Also, the League of Women Voters donated books for the children's collection. It's the second year in a row we've received that donation. And the library started a gardening club, had their first meeting on September 19th. Parks and Recreation, Jennifer and Michelle were awarded a grant, which was to feature National Parks and Recreation Conference for intergenerational programming, which they have done. The Second Annual Food Truck Event took place and had 13 trucks. We're estimating there's about 2,200 people that attended, and there's some pictures from above. Also, recently, the Whitewater 2nd and 3rd grader football team lined up against each other on the gridiron, and let's see, Whitewater 1 was crowned the hometown champion, and that is also pictured above. In the HR Department, the City Manager's Office, with assistance from HR, began a series of departmental listening sessions about workplace needs and priorities. We've met with water, wastewater, finance, streets, and we're focusing on areas such as job responsibilities, staffing levels, compensation. We're going to continue these conversations. Also, we recently hosted a week-long caption this contest, and Thomas Cushman won best in show, and Makyla Fail, I hope I pronounced that right, won People's Choice, and you can see the captions and the pictures above. Okay, Police Department has a new recruiting video, so please check that out. It's been viewed more than 750 times already and continues to grow. It will also be available on our other platforms. Also, our fifth episode of the Bridge to Whitewater series, Civic Matters, is available on all of our platforms. Future episodes will be released shortly. Also, on Channel 990, the city and the school district have discussed the possibility of recording and streaming school sporting events, so we're going to continue to look for that, and we will let you know if that actually happens. But that should be a promising area for programming, but I think, no offense to our wonderful meetings, people might watch the sporting events. Also, if you want to be a poll worker, we're hiring. Please let us know. We're always looking for people looking to do their civic duty and can always use help. That wraps it up from my end. Any questions, please feel free to reach out to the Chief of Staff or the City Manager. Thank you very much.
All right, any questions for John? All right. We only had one staff report left on the agenda, and that was social media update. So John, were you taking care of that one?
I gotta pull up the packet on my computer. Sorry, computer's booting. I think it was literally routine updates about us moving over to the group page, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, do you want to just come up and mention it, Becky?
I'm almost there.
Sure. So when Facebook started for the city, it was on a Facebook page, but when you're on a Facebook page, you can't control the comments unless you, when you post something, you are there right away to make sure you add no comment. So we switched over to a group, which we have more control over, but there is loopholes as Facebook wants engagement on everything. So there is going to be an occasional comment that gets in without, you know, no fault of anybody's trying to work through social media. It's just, I just want to say it is what it is. We're doing our best to help and if people messenger us, we'll answer their questions on Messenger, but nothing directly on the Facebook.
I think Neil had some specific questions, so we made sure that this memo got out there. In short, we're trying very hard to comply with the vote that the council took to remove comments, and occasionally they get through because Facebook truly wants the engagement.
Neil, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
No, that, that report explained exactly what I was looking for. I appreciate the information on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Anything else, John, you wanted to add?
No, if there are other questions, just send them to us, and we'll continue doing our best.
All right, next up, we have hearing of citizen comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Participants are only a three-minute speaking period, and although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we do allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anybody here that has any non-agenda-related public comment, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good to go.
Yeah, your address, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. W3224 State Road 59, Whitewater.
Go ahead.
So what I'm going to do, because I know it's three minutes, I apologize, I'm not going to make eye contact, I'm going to re-read off this so I can keep it to the three minutes. My name is Alan Wood. I am a resident and intervenor in the Whitewater Solar Project. The docket number is 9828 CE100. I'm also speaking on behalf of other intervenors and non-participating landowners. I appreciate the opportunity to address three important matters tonight, the joint development agreement, the appeal, and how the board would vote on a solar project. First, the JDA. It is a binding contract that would commit this city to a significant financial and legal obligations before all questions about the project are resolved. Once signed, it is extremely difficult to withdraw from the signing. Signing it now, while the project's approval is going to be under legal challenge, could expose the city and taxpayers to unnecessary risk if the Prodigy Act changes, fails, or is overturned. I urge the board not to sign any JDA until the appeals are resolved and until residents have a full and fair opportunity to be heard. That's not a comment on this board, that's more a comment on the PSC, so. Second, regarding the appeal, our community has raised serious concerns about how the Public Service Commission has handled the review, errors in the record, procedural irregularities, and environmental oversights. By joining the appeal, the city can protect its rights, preserve local control, and ensure the courts hear the city's position directly. This isn't about politics, this is purely about the fairness, the accountability, and the due process. Finally, when it comes time for the board on how you would vote for a solar farm, I ask that you consider the long-term impacts, loss of prime farmland, flood risk, road damage, and the financial uncertainty surrounding the project's ownership. These decisions will affect our community for decades. These are 30-to-50-year contracts. The residents of this city deserve clear answers, not vague promises, which is what Whitewater Solar and the PSC have offered so far. Again, not you folks. In closing, I respectfully ask the board to delay signing any JDA, join the appeal, and ensure that how you would vote truly reflects the best interest of the residents you serve. Please stand with the residents, not with the developers, by refusing to join, to sign the JDA until every legal and environmental question has been answered. Let's take the time to get this right for everyone in Whitewater. I look forward to working with you and your thoughts throughout the process. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Alan. All right, anybody else in the public or in the gallery wishing to speak?
My name is Yvette LaSalle.
And then address, and then you got your three minutes.
Okay. My address is West 2861 State Road 59, Whitewater, Wisconsin, 53190. You may have driven around the area and seen the signs. I'm the one responsible for that in terms of stoking that fire, along with my fellow interveners. We had over 20 individuals intervene in this thing. Alan, it came to you with our asks. I'm going to speak to you a little bit more from my gut as a teacher, and I'm going to tell you that I've got, I can't even count how many hours of volunteering, and I know you guys volunteer, and you are caring about our community. I'm not here because I don't want a view of solar panels. I'm here because I'm an environmentalist, I'm a scientist, I'm a teacher, and I'm a member of this community. And what I'm telling you is, when you guys approved that easement that allowed this to happen, I don't believe that you had access to a full packet that showed you exactly what was about to happen. The easement money that you guys were paid was pennies on the dollar compared to the easements that they've paid out in the town. One easement that's about the same size as yours was over $200,000, plus more than that. You guys got hosed. And what I'm telling you is, is that that decision was made before you really had access to what this was going to do. This is going to fence off 2,800 acres of land, which is going to remove all of that land from use by wildlife. It's also going to endanger our local crop farmers by generating an erosion situation. Not only that, if you're hiking out on the Ice Age Trail, and we enjoy the status of being an Ice Age Trail community, you're now going to see a sea of solar panels enveloping the area instead of a beautiful rural landscape. So it's also going to besmirch our status, our beautiful status, as a respite for the tri-city area. I want to back up my associate, Alan, who's much more well-spoken than I am, and beg you to join our appeal. I would like to beg you to allow us as interveners to come and share the experience that we had. I don't know if you could really truly understand how corrupt the PSC is at this point, but this is the point I want to drive home, is they have stolen local control from the people. They have taken the voice from the people by usurping your voice. We have land management plans in place that would prevent something like this from happening. I'm a member of Jefferson County, and we preserve farmland. This is not a preservation of farmland. You are dooming that land to be an industrial wasteland enveloping our beautiful area. 2,800 acres. It's half the size of our city. Bluff Road, where cyclists are, Highway 12, 59, all the main thoroughfares are going to see a giant facility such as this. I have strong concerns about the nuisance animals and the wildlife implications. I thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name is Anne Tillit. I live at W7695 Bluff Road in Whitewater. Some of you might know it as the old Keith House. He was a sheriff here for many years. The proposal of the solar project will surround our house on three sides by an industrial power plant. We will have solar panels and fencing to the south, the east, the southeast, and the northwest. The time and energy that we have spent learning about what this will mean to us as individuals living surrounded by an industrial power plant, and what it will mean to our community, has been amazing, and a huge investment of time. What we are asked What we are asking is that you allow us to be partners, especially in the development agreement, because we have researched quite a bit and have a lot of great ideas that could really benefit not just ourselves, but our whole community of people who weren't able to come here tonight to ask for your help. We would appreciate support, and in that appeal process as well, participating in the PSC process has been exhausting. As citizens who are not attorneys, knowing, understanding how to participate in that process has been a lot. And so any sort of partnership that we might be able to form would be very beneficial. So I think as we are here today, speaking up for our area, community members, farmers who are not able to be here with us tonight, the owner of the grain facility on Highway 59, we're here representing a lot of real concerns around our economy and our community environment and identity. So thank you for listening and for considering adding this to a future agenda where we could have a conversation about these topics.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda in the audience? Brad, is there anybody else online?
No.
Okay. All right. We took care of Resolution 13 on the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item number 14, discussion possible action regarding approval of rate increase for the stormwater utility. John, are you leading us up? Brad? Rachel?
Yeah, I can start.
All right, yeah, just wanted to come up and introduce yourself. I know you've been here before, so.
So the last we left, the council asked for something that represented a more flatter trajectory of the rates, and I think the shortest version is the recommendations being made by LERS. They weren't able to hit the target like the council wanted, and that's because we have an obligation not to be in a negative cash flow situation, so they'll walk through that and still have a different option that presents a more smooth curvature, and then we'll just need feedback from the council. I think that's a sufficient kickoff.
Correct.
And I think our people in the booth are listening, and they'll scroll the TVs along with the presentation that you see, so.
Do you want the presentation up? Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And we can take the presentation to page nine, 'cause I did leave in the...
Original.
In original, and then from nine on is kind of the alternative presented, so if we want to go to page nine on our presentation, the slide reads "Alternative Requested 9/25". There you go, thank you. So Brian Raymer, Senior Municipal Advisor with LERS, and back before here, before you tonight to kind of present that smoother option, but kind of wanted to express some of those limitations, you know, as the fiduciary to the city. It's hard for me to recommend something where the utility is still losing money in a consideration where then you would have negative cash and have to rely on other funds within the government there, so that's kind of the checkmark number one. The other item is, we still wanted to solve for a similar methodology as the first option presented, meaning we're solving for the minimum recommended rate adjustment over the planning period wherein you're still using your max use of cash, a bunch above benchmark for capital needs, as well as get your debt coverage minimum to 1.4. One of the reasons for that, I'll remind you, is because debt coverage is essentially how much revenues do you have for debt, so cash revenues against cash expenditures. That amount should be at least a dollar and 40 cents for every dollar of debt service. The reason for that, utilities just tend to have volatile expenses that can be unpredictable, and therefore, in order to maintain the ability to pay your debt service, having that be at 1.4, right, gives you that kind of cushion for volatility. And then in addition to that, you had requested that the total utility bill be depicted. So with that, we'll go on to the next slide. As the city manager kind of preempted there, we aren't able to kind of reduce the impact that much. The one thing I'll just note, if you're kind of curious how we landed on the increases, I'll lead your eyes to the bottom of the 2026 column where we show, right, your balance of cash at zero, so we are still allowing for negative cash flow in 2026. So again, smoother, 'cause it'll be smaller than what was originally presented, and I'll kind of speak to that in terms of impact shortly. And then beyond that, we're kind of solving to build to the same resultant from the first four years of increases, so getting to that 1.4, again, on the bottom line of this chart by the end of those first four years. Beyond that, being able to kind of maintain with assumed increases in operating and maintenance expenses as nothing gets cheaper, kind of biennial increases beyond that point, so starting in 2031 and beyond. So to kind of speak to the difference between this scenario and the other, on the next page, I'll lead your eyes to the kind of three-quarters of the way to the right. Previously, we had presented kind of a smooth $3 per year change to the rates. All that really changes now is it's less in the first year and a little bit more in preceding years. Specifically, you can see it's only a $2 increase for that first year for one ERU, and then it increases to $3 and about 50 cents per month in that second year. So we can, you know, still make that recommendation. Again, you're subject to how good you think the budget would be set up to pay for said expenses, and you still would be at risk, right, if you had some sort of maintenance event or other expenditure that exceeded your budget to have a negative cash position, even solving at this rate adjustment. But it was requested. In addition here, you can see where the water utility bill sits and the sewer utility bill sits. This is not a recommendation to do nothing with those for 10 years, it's just an acknowledgement that we were not engaged to provide, you know, a recommendation on future rate adjustments for the water and sewer utility. So simply, we're just adding that bill, so you can see for an average residential user, and this is specifically using about 3,250 gallons per month at a 5-inch meter, how their water and sewer bill look, and then adding that stormwater bill that we did previously present, but now this is just kind of that second scenario. So that, I believe, is kind of all there is for the changes in terms of what was presented last time and just kind of the alternative that you had requested. Certainly can be here to answer questions.
I had a couple of questions. So obviously, the other utilities, well, water is consumption-based. These are ERUs. So for our regular property owners, a residential unit is one. When we look at some of our larger customers, and you did include that, that overview of the top 10 rate payers and what the different rates would impact, how do we assess, like, you know, say the university has new construction, and they put another parking lot in? Like, how, are ERUs for the different areas adjusted as that growth occurs? I'm just thinking, like, our tax base increases, and we can levy, are we also accounting for new impervious surface or offsets that they may have in terms of onsite stormwater retention? So I just wanted to check, like...
I don't have all the specifics. Brad probably has more than I do, but I know as part of the permitting process, the ERUs are calculated and logged, and we go forward from there. So as soon as it, they, like...
So those are, those are not static? That's not, the ERUs, like, the university or DLK?
Each time something is built, ERUs are added.
Okay. So Brad, can you, can I, any other?
Just, it's based on impervious area, so every 2,850 square feet counts as one ERU, so that's how we determine how many ERUs are for those non-residential properties.
And like you said, it's being, as you pull, as they pull the permits, then that's getting factored in. Okay. And then in terms of just looking at, you know, how do we calculate any kind of offset credit? Like, if they have stormwater detention, you know, university builds something new, or a private developer builds something new and puts in a large detention pond, does that reduce their liability from an ERU perspective? Or how does...
No, because they have to meet the state regulations and our city ordinance anyways for reducing stormwater pollutants and, and flood control. There is an appeal process for non-residential properties who go above and beyond to incorporate something. I do not know if, if there are any of those out there, there are a handful that took credit when this was first established.
Yeah, I wasn't just sure how, how that factored in. Those are my two questions. Does anybody have anything? Brian?
This might be getting into weeds of a future project, but I know one of the big costs in the budgeting for this was the underground detention basin in Staren Park. Now, I noticed it says city portion, so then I'm assuming the university is the other entity on the...
There would be two other entities. We are hoping to get principal forgiveness to offset some of the cost, and then, yes, the UW would be the other partnership.
All right. Gregor Orrin, any questions on this? I see Neil dropped off, so.
Nope, it seems like you covered them. Thank you.
What is needed from us tonight, if anything, or the council, if anything?
I did provide a resolution to staff that, that's more just kind of open-ended, 'cause I think if you have direction and want to take this resolution up, I know there was commentary at the last meeting about public engagement and things like that, so certainly you have time to implement to 2026. So I think at minimum, kind of up to staff, I'd like to move it from here and/or the council.
And then essentially, you're asking them to look at two options, either a 48.62% increase or a 33.42% increase, which is, that's what the resolution specifically does, just to be clear. Okay.
All right, and we will, if there's only, no council questions or comments at this point, we could open up for public comment if the council's open to that. All right. All right, is there any public comment? Just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you get three minutes.
Jeff Knight, 405 Panther Court. So in your packet related to the park, your finance director did a very good communication, I thought was well, well done, and it basically says additionally, council should weigh recent ongoing increase in stormwater utility rates, and this seems to be a priority. So a couple of questions I had is, how do you assess where we are? I mean, maybe recently, the university took out a baseball diamond, a couple other things, and they built additional parking. So the question is, when I looked at the rates that were in here comparing to what was 2005 to 2006 and 2007, they didn't seem to all go up at the same percentage, and the universities seemed to go a little less aggressive, and I didn't do the percentages, I just started looking at the packet, 'cause I got it up on Friday. And so my question really is, what's the starting point when you got a major university? So I don't want us to make the same mistake of going to an agreement like we did with the dispatch, and then you find out from joint finance that it was done improperly, and then we get stung by less taxes for it. So what it made me think about is, shouldn't we really go back to square one, find out exactly where their footprint is? And maybe they've done that, I don't know. And, 'cause I do think that based on the growth that's occurred in the city from when we moved here, the majority of it has been typically university-related. So the question is, you know, for me as a residency, are they paying their fair share? So for example, I know they're only paying, the state pays about 34 cents on the dollar of the property tax back to the city than they should. And so the question is, are we falling into the same trap with the stormwater, and should we maybe go a little slower, make sure the university's paying their fair share, and then we put it to them, and maybe some of the construction costs might actually be somewhere on campus to defray some of this larger cost that me as a rate payer of the hinterlands will be required to pay. So I'm just asking you to look at Rachel's letter, I thought it was well done, I think it really does open up what the issue is related to the university, but then look at those rates that you had on there, and maybe explain to me why they may not be all at the same rate, 'cause I didn't understand them. Just trying to figure out why there would be a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Larry Katcha, 457 South Buckingham Boulevard. I have a couple of questions. Do all of our surrounding communities use ERUs? Are they, are they segregated when they're listing on the bills or not? Because I tried to find Elkhorn East, Troy, Delavan, and Lake Geneva. I'm sure they're in there some way, but I don't see, they don't stand out. And when I compare, you know, our total water costs, that'd be water and sewer costs, both fixed and then usage, we're on the higher end of most of our surrounding communities. So as part of this, this discussion, where do we really stand? I know when we see our water rates are on the lower end, but we also know our sewer rates are on the much higher end. And as part of going into something like this, we need, I think this needs to be brought in front of the public for a full, full discussion, 'cause it is a tax, whether you call it a tax or a fee, it's a tax. Second issue, I remember on Park and Rec a couple of years ago, they brought up that underground through Staren Park. Is that actually gonna go underneath Kyler Field, or is it going around Kyler Field? Pardon?
This is not for back and forth, this is for you to have your three minutes.
But that's a question that I have, would like to be answered. And underground, to me, seems extremely expensive. Is there not an opportunity for additional water retention pond somewhere? I mean, where is the flow coming from? And I, I look at the expansion in the community, has this been a long-term issue? Are you just getting around to it now? I haven't seen a whole lot of new payment in the university over the last couple of years. So I just, has it been festering? You know, we really don't know, and I think the, the community as a whole, we'd like a little bit more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other public comment at this point? All right, any other questions from council before we get into some, you know, debate and hopefully can provide some direction to staff? All right. So we'll open it up for, all right, what, what is the preference here from the council in terms of moving forward with, you know, what was presented from LERS, other ideas or other information or process-related things in terms of kind of the community engagement side of it as well? So we'll open that up at this point, and anybody want to go first?
You guys need to do something. It doesn't have to be today, but something needs to be done. And I would point out for the people who might be suggesting that the public isn't informed, we had a very long presentation two weeks ago that explained we haven't touched rates since 2015. That's the genesis of being, now we need to figure out what to do next.
I guess one, one of the things that might be helpful, and I don't remember if it was in any of the discussion or materials we've previously discussed, but is that comparison of, you know, our total utility burden compared to other communities just would be helpful as we're, you know, obviously, we're, we're trying to bring in development on the single-family side.
I'm fine with getting it. How is, how, how do you see it being helpful?
Just to see where we are competitively. I mean, I know we're in a cash flow issue. We haven't raised the rates in a while, but just understanding the, the total burden...
Sure, we'll get it.
...of utilities for both at the con...
You hit on the point I wanted to make. There's a difference between where we stand as a community in comparison to our peers and dealing with the cash flow issue based on actual expenses. We're good, we'll put it together. Couple weeks, shouldn't take long. I think we have one we can dust off and update. I'm seeing heads nodding, so we'll have it at the next meeting.
Sure, if I can add on to that, I think a comment I made in the past regarding this is, is, you know, really spelling out, you know, the need for the addition and, and why the timing for now is now. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have, I don't have any, I, I trust, you know, I trust that it's needed, but I think that, you know, based on, you know, what, what has been expressed here and such, that spelling out the need and the opportunity cost would, would be critical to, to helping, to helping the public understand better.
What else?
I think it should be, it's important to stress that since the rates haven't been changed in a while...
I think it should be, it's important to stress that since the rates haven't been changed in a while, that really there's any large jumps are really due to the fact that they should have been changed in the past, and you just got to break. We've been, we've been living off of a, we've been having a break for the last couple of years, and now it's time to pay the bill for it.
And I think it would be helpful when looking at those ratepayers, and I tried to do a little math here based on that question that came up, but it looks like, yeah, the universities would go up. If we're just taking the 2025 amount, sixty-four and change, and the 2026 proposed into the nine seventeen unit, it was like twenty-nine percent, where like the city was at like thirty-two percent, the DLK was at like thirty-four percent, Whitewater Schools was up above thirty. So like, what what is the genesis of that? Oh, I said it was a rough math. So
Staff will have an answer.
Just understanding that, you know, why that difference, maybe it's by base number of ERUs or that, so. But that that would be helpful. And then I think we've talked in the past, just reaching out individually to those those ratepayers to explain, you know, what what the need is and what the impact on on their particular entity would be. You know, we've got, you know, some ourselves and the school district and the university, but then we've got a number of privately-held businesses as well. Greg, you had a, your hand up?
Yeah, I I don't see what all the fuss is about. I'm fine with the original proposal as proposed last time. Obviously, you can wait for the information that's been requested, but the math walks us through why it's needed. Lack of action in the past walks us through why it's needed. My comments.
All right. Orin?
I largely agree with Greg. I think that the lack of action really is why we need to take action now. I am more in favor of this smoother slope than the one presented last week. But I do think that it is pertinent that we make a decision within a reasonable period of time and don't spend too much time deliberating on what we should do between meetings and instead take the time to make it, have discussion and make a decision.
Neil, did you have anything, since we're going around the folks that are online?
No, I I think we need it. I just, you know, if it's not going to, our, it's not going to affect our ability for the grant or any other deadlines. You know, to me, it doesn't hurt to get the additional information out there for the public. I agree, we want to get up, we need to get back to where we need to be for money reasons, but it's going to be a shock. I mean, we we need to get back, and people, maybe they'll realize, yes, you haven't been paying, I don't want to say your fair share, but we haven't been where we need to be for how many years. That doesn't change the fact that their bills are going to suffer, and I mean, it's going to hurt. So we need to get there, but I'd like to just make sure we have all the information out there for the public, that they know why this is happening. And going forward, we should be in a much better position to slowly ramp with the requirements and, you know, shouldn't have this issue again in the future.
So in terms of, I heard Greg, you you said you were open to the original kind of proposal, but obviously, the smoothing would would be under consideration for you. Orin, you said you were maybe more in favor of the the proposal from tonight. Is there any other feedback from council, just in terms of if we start to kind of coalesce around the smoothing or the original proposal, then that gives staff the direction and where
I'd also, because we're going to contact these top ten, I'd like to give them, recognizing it's not binding, some idea, right, saying if you want to participate, this is the meeting you're coming to, and this is some idea of what you can expect. So it's not required, but yes, if you guys could have a discussion and kind of coalesce around what you're thinking, that'll help staff. Recognizing you can change your mind at the next meeting, it's all good.
I think it's clear that the original proposal seems to be the way to go. I think that a number of committee members also feel that way. I think that we want to have maybe some clarity on how we're going to approach all the rate users to explain, you know, the the need for the large rate increase. And I think that might be the only only additional bit of information that we need.
Mike?
Um, no, I think I want to leave it at that. Well, I'll just, I I think. Now, I'm just, I'm just going to repeat what I said before. I think you understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
You're more on the smoother, like the.
Oh, as far as that goes, you know, if we're going to do it, I mean, to me, we're talking about, what, a dollar or two a month? I don't know. I don't, I'm not, I don't see a per ERU. I'm not, I'm not. I don't have a preference, I guess.
All right.
I think I, yeah, splitting hairs, I think the original, I kind of like the three dollars each, because then it's just three, 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 as opposed to two and change, four and change, two and change.
Yeah, and I think to echo kind of what you just said. We've got to do it. We've kind of backed ourselves into this this corner, but having, you know, just that education engagement.
I got four things worth that staff is supposed to bring at the next meeting. Spell out the need for why now, which essentially means, I think that was Mike's, essentially means if we have projects that are tied to these rate increases, we need to be explaining why these projects are happening in this year and their necessity, which we will do. We need a comparison to our other communities, not only just the stormwater rates, but also across all rates, which we will do. We need to explain why the percentages are different for the different users, whether that be the school district, the city, et cetera, which we will do. And we need to contact the top ten ratepayers and let them know what the status is, which essentially will be, we're going to send them a letter and reach out to them via phone and let them know at the next meeting, the council is going to take under serious consideration the resolution. No promises, they'll decide, but this would be the meeting to show up if they had things they wanted to say.
And I think in terms of timing, I mean, we have our next meeting on the 21st. Then we have the meeting on the 7th, which will be at the university, and then we have our meeting on the 21st again, which would be our budget adoption.
Most likely, your budget meeting, your budget hearing.
So, I mean, in terms of any notice in that, I mean, we got to have this done by the end of the year. I would define stacking the resolution on the budget meeting.
Okay.
Just because we're also setting the levy and the and the tax rate. But we could have it on for next meeting to just kind of hear this information, continue to hopefully refine it, but maybe target that meeting in the 21st, the budget adoption public hearing meeting for the for actual consideration of whatever the final direction is. Does that, gives us over a month to do all those things John just enumerated?
Yep. On next agenda for an update, budget hearing for consideration of the resolution.
And then the fifth item to add to that information list is what, I'll call it roadblock, could, for example, joint finance throw up with an increase in rate for the university and that?
The stormwater rates? I was even looking into it, but it should be none. It's a utility.
Just to make sure we don't end up in one of those weird.
Much, much different than an MOU.
Yeah.
But yes. Look into liability.
All right, any other questions or comments at this point? All right, so this will be on next agenda.
Correct.
It'll be on a couple agendas, so we'll see it next in two weeks. All right. All right, item number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding approval of proposed scope of services for development of an updated comprehensive plan with RDG Planning and Design.
Mason, they did an RFP, they graded it. Go ahead.
Yep, thank you, yes. We are proposing to conduct the first update of the city's comprehensive plan, which is a document required by state law. The first update since 2017. I did share a link to that plan. While it's a quality document, if we think of everything that's changed since 2020 in our world, I think that document does need updating. We issued a request for proposal in early August. Six responses were received, five were from qualifying firms. And after review, scoring, and discussion, the internal review committee is recommending RDG Planning and Design to be awarded the Comprehensive Plan Update Project. I believe we do have a representative, Charlie Cowell, from RDG. He's going to present some brief information and is available to take your questions.
All right. Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, Mason. Can you hear me okay?
We might need to boost the sound a little bit.
Okay.
Or just yell really loud into the mic and.
I'll go ahead here, and I'll try to talk loudly. Hopefully, it comes through okay. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to work on this project with you and the community. As Mason said, I'm Charlie Cowell with RDG Planning and Design. We are a multi-disciplinary design firm. We have architects, landscape architects, stormwater engineers, graphic designers, and then myself, urban planner, and community regional planning group. I'm based in Des Moines, but we have a Madison office, which will have folks helping out on this project as well if we get the opportunity to move forward. I would be the project manager and make contact for the project. And and in our proposal, hopefully you had a chance to look, look over it, we're really excited about the opportunity to work in a town that has deep roots in in a university city, as we've heard, I've been able to hear about tonight. We've had experience in town gown university communities across the Midwest, including La Crosse, Oshkosh, and and other areas in Wisconsin. So we're excited to be able to bring that experience to you, to to work through new opportunities for housing, new opportunities for for land use and transportation, and other things that 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 we're excited to learn more about with the community. Our overall process is outlined in the proposal. It's it's a little bit under a twelve-month process. We would kick things off this fall, working with your staff to to organize a public engagement plan and how we want to approach that, getting things prepared as we head into our fall holidays, and then really hitting the ground running when we get started in the new year to engage with the community, get out and talk to people, continue to visit, tour around, take photos, and then approach into our design workshop, which is kind of the flagship event that we like to do during comprehensive planning, where we work with the community to think about land use growth, our needs for the future, draw things out, identify subareas that we may want to focus in on more, look closely at the downtown, and a number of different things I'm sure we'll we'll learn about in the process. We'll have a a team that you'll you'll see a lot of throughout the process as well, but we have to have the ability to bring in specialties if we need to, if we learn about new things as we move along. Like I mentioned, if it's stormwater issues, or it's corridor planning we want to take a look at, or graphics, or wavefinding, or whatever it may be, we don't know what the end product is going to look like right now that that all unfolds during the process. But without kind of taking up too much more of your time, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you had as you looked over our our proposal or about RDG in general.
Any questions from council at this point?
I would just point out this is a budgeted item. I don't, anything else, Major, you want to mention?
I had a question on that.
Yeah.
Budgeted, so the total was, I think, eighty, some and change, and we have thirty-five in this year, and then you'll put the remainder in.
Assuming this gets approved tonight.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And it's time and materials, I would assume, as encouraged, so, you know, and and if we don't burn the whole thirty-five, you can just carry it forward to to next year.
Yes.
In terms of the neighbor, so I remember years ago when we did our comprehensive plan, there was neighborhood plans as well. Is this just the entire comp plan, or are we going to kind of do neighborhood by?
Cover the entire city in the comprehensive plan.
Which does include the neighborhood plans, but it would encompass everything.
Okay. Because I remember like at Plan Commission, they would take like this neighborhood plan back and this, and it was a very elongated process.
Going to take a year.
And then I know we use Allison for our code enforcement, but she does other recommendations. I assume she would be part of some of those conversations to help educate RDG on on what we're seeing and things like that.
Future land use and such, yeah, absolutely.
All right, any other questions at this point? Otherwise, we can open up for public comment. All right, is there any public comment on this item? Just reintroduce yourself, Jeff.
I appreciate the the question you asked, Patrick. So the question I'd have is, how did we go from thirty-five to eighty-five? I mean, what what don't we realize? Is there a change in the market? Or was this always a portion of it and then be higher? So I guess the question is, because that's quite a leap from what you had budgeted. I think you guys do a pretty good job of budgeting, so that's the only question. I went through their packet. It looks like you guys are retaining a good firm. I don't have any other questions related to who you're hiring or why. The only other thing is timing. You got ten years to do this, so you could have a little longer. I wouldn't rush them, let them do a good job. But the question I have is, what's changed in the market to go from a thirty-five budget to eighty-five?
Any other? Was that just a number? Yeah, just if you if you know what the answer is, if it was kind of a pre, this is a prepayment or like the first phase of it and then.
Yeah, I think that was kind of a general overview cost estimate, to my understanding that.
I think it was just a bad estimate.
Yeah, the estimate came from Sewer PAC, which is not related to wastewater. It's Southeast Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. They're, they do good work. The city has used them before, but they kind of take work as they can fit it in. And if we had consulted with them.
It's a three-year wait.
Yes, yeah, it would have been.
Three-year sewer.
They can maybe do it at thirty-five, but you're waiting.
I don't think it was even that low. I don't remember. Did Sewer PAC even bid?
The the cost estimate of thirty-five thousand was from Sewer.
Was it from them?
But they did not submit to the RFP.
Okay. All right.
This this bid that we selected was one of our two lowest bids. The others were, I believe, all over a hundred thousand. Some of them were significantly over a hundred thousand. So I think, just like everything, costs have gone up, staff is more expensive than than it used to be. It's just reflected in the marketplace.
It's all those subscriptions to AI that the consultants have, that they're running it through.
That was going to be my next question, too, was how did the the price kind of stack up in terms of the other bids?
Second lowest, but not as low as Sewer PAC would have been had they bid, which they didn't.
But we'd be waiting for twenty years to get into.
Twenty twenty-eight, yeah.
All right, and we'll, and obviously, the budget discussions are starting Thursday, and we'll be working through that. But Brienne, did you have something?
Yeah, Brienne Brown, 156 North Fremont Street. I've been to a number of educational sessions where it's looking like comprehensive plans often have wildlife corridors planned, and I'm just curious if this group does that, wildlife corridors. Sometimes it's basically just like rerouting wildlife so it doesn't get hit on the road, because we are the third largest in terms of states that have major amounts of money paid out by insurance companies, we're number three in the nation. So I'm just curious if that's something that this company does.
Charlie, is that something? Did you, did you hear the question?
Yeah, I did, and it's it's a, it's an interesting aspect, yes. We do have a a group of parks, parks and open space, and and people that focus on that type of analysis. If it, it's not something that on the on the surface isn't necessarily our proposed scope, but if it, if it, as we do the community engagement, it's, it comes out as, you know, a large priority. Obviously, it's going to be part of the plan. We're going to be looking at greenways, natural areas, focusing on preserving those spaces as well. That's all part of the land use planning exercise. So to answer your question, yes, it it, because it is a comprehensive plan, we look at all aspects of of land use planning. Whether we get into very specific policy or design recommendations on wildlife borders, I can't, to be determined, I guess, if that would get that specific in the process.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from council or any action on the recommended selection of vendor for this effort? All right, moved by Maisha. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Smith M. To approve RDG. Seconded by Smith M. to approve RDG Planning and Design Services in the amount of-
Eighty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
Eighty-five thousand four hundred for development update of our comprehensive plan. All right, any further discussion? All right, Heather, if you please call the roll.
Hicks.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Mike Smith.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Orin Smith.
Aye.
Myschak.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, so, looking forward to working with you, Charlie.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you all soon.
All right, next up, we'll move on to item number sixteen, which was the one we added under the waiver, was discussion and possible action to approve police department vehicle purchases. Rachel, or-
Yeah, I can kick it off while Rachel's coming up, she'll have some numbers if you need them, but essentially, we got called, our vehicles are ready early, we either take them, or we lose our spot, which I know is not a wonderful position to be in. Fortunately, we're equipped to deal with it, we have two essential options, they essentially amount to the same thing. One, we are tracking to be under budget on expenses, so this is something we'd be able to absorb with cash this year. And two, we have several million dollars in our undesignated fund reserves, which we would use to pay for the purchase upfront, to be replaced by the appropriate monies that are already budgeted for this purchase next year.
Under the referendum.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's essentially, they are journal entries in our system. Rachel, can you walk you through the dollar amounts in our fund reserves? The other thing I would ask you to consider is, I think we have the number to fully put the vehicles in service, I would recommend instead of storing them, until next year, when we pay for the remainder, to then put them in service. Rachel has the updated amount, we simply put them in service. That doesn't all have to be done tonight, deciding to take the vehicles does have to be done tonight, but we could come back for the approval of the other monies, otherwise Rachel has that dollar amount. With that, I'll get out of the way.
So, I think the memo in there states what the vehicles, the cost of the vehicles are. To outfit each one, it's twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents, along with fifteen hundred dollars to decal each one. So those costs are in addition to, I think it's like ninety, close to ninety-six or ninety-eight thousand for the two vehicles.
Yeah, the vehicles are ninety-seven nine nine four, and then it would be essentially twenty-seven thousand seven hundred to outfit each. So that's what we're asking for. Again, it's temporarily moving money around to cover an already budgeted expense that we were going to purchase next year with the referendum monies.
Sure. I will move to approve these resources for the purchase of the two vehicles and the additions.
And the equipping of them?
Yes.
Which is about twenty-eight thousand per vehicle.
Okay.
All right, so you, Smith M. motions, Shannon seconds, Steve had your hand up, and then anybody, we'll jump to the people online. Okay. Gregor, Neil, did you have anything, or Orin?
I was going to second. What was the storage fee? Did we get into that yet, are we going to get into that?
The stor- storage fee?
No, they would just sit, it wouldn't, we can store them ourselves, but we just, without the resources to put them into service, they wouldn't have the decals or all of the equipment inside of them. So it wasn't like we were going to go rent a storage unit and push them in there. So, anyway, if you're looking for a do-not-exceed-dollar amount on that, it would be, oh, sorry, I need to do that times two.
I'm fine, I misunderstood.
And I think, Mike, your motion was to do the purchase and outfitting, which would allow them-
Which would be about a hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred, not to exceed.
Okay, you're fine with that?
Yes.
All right. And that would get them on the road?
Yes.
Quickly.
And we are already hiring the staff, you guys approved the hiring plan, so the staff are rolling in.
All right, so there was a motion and a second to approve the purchase of these vehicles early, which will be handled through some accounting mechanisms that Rachel will put into place in terms of paying it out of fun, funding available this year, and then kind of backfilling that once the money comes in through the twenty-twenty-six budget.
Not to exceed a hundred and fifty-six five hundred, I like having those numbers in there.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call, Heather.
Mike Smith.
Aye.
Orin Smith.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Myschak.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, and before we're done for tonight, we now have the item we pulled up from the consent agenda, which is MOU with UW-Whitewater for parking.
So I can take this? The main reason I asked us to come here is because if we want to move forward, looking at a different parking system, which we're fine with, I think we wrote it in there, we need more time, because the way we currently enforce parking doesn't involve any app-based structure, it is something that eventually would have to go through an RFP process, being a procurement of software, so it's just going to take a little more time than two weeks. That's it, that's the genesis for being here right now, otherwise, if there's a desire to move forward in another way, we can talk about it. Otherwise, we would ask, we at least need one year under some structure with the university, they would like five.
So I know, for those of us that are on finance, we did have this discussion, because the forty-five thousand has been fairly static-
Correct.
-in terms of their contribution over the last number of years, and I know there was some interest in exploring, potentially getting more out of that agreement, or if we don't have that forty-five thousand, you know, could the city look at monetize, you know, making sure that there's some revenue capture potentially in that area, based on, you know, the city running the parking enforcement and meters, but like John said, that's not something you just go like that?
We don't currently enforce parking like that. If we did, it'd be a little different, we could run some numbers, but we currently do, it's a reporting-based, we have people that drive around, we have tow trucks that we have MOUs with, I believe, we have relationships, so.
Oh, Greg, did you have a question, or did you have a comment?
This is more of a statement. You know, we had the same discussion five years ago, when we looked at renewed this, I think it's a waste of time and a waste of resources. I say, sign the five-year agreement, and if we want to figure something out, we got five years to do it.
Thanks, Greg. I mean, I think, and I said this at the Finance Committee, I mean, my larger issue was the access to the parking by the residents, because originally it was metered, then it went to kind of permit-only, where if you didn't have one of those very expensive long-term permits on the campus, you really couldn't use it. It sounds like now, according to the information Rachel had, there is some ability, either a day pass or something, that-
It's in the memo from Brenda, but yes, five-day, five-dollar day online pass.
That residents can use those spots, but they would have to buy the five dollars, it's not like just the metered spots that are, you know, closer up to the UC. So I think that was one of my concerns, you know, in terms of indexing the amount, it would be nice, because obviously the university's parking fee structure, sounds like it has grown over time, but I do know that that is a, you know, a financial challenge for them, the parking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm correct in saying that the information that we have is that, is that the university's actually losing money on this, which makes it hard for us to, hard for me to justify asking for more.
And I think zero is, or forty-five is greater than zero. I think the only question is, yeah, does the Council want to just adopt this tonight, make a counteroffer in terms of maybe a shorter term, or, you know, have staff direction, or provide staff, direction to staff to basically look at, you know, the city having some kind of operation to support that stretch of road. So I, like I said, yeah, it would be nice, but I would be fine going with the forty-five, five years, there's some predictability there, but I agree, it doesn't look great that, you know, that hasn't been increased over, over a decade, you know, how, and we've had this agreement with them for quite, quite some time. So, Brian?
Yeah, because it was at forty K when it was originally established in twenty-twelve, I think, for the Prairie Street reconstruction, then it went up to forty-five in twenty-seventeen, and then it's been stagnant since. And I remember when that stuff happened in twenty-seventeen, when the meters went down, that created a lot of animosity between the city and the university, because it was, it just kind of happened. I'd love to see some way to get some meters back on the streets, especially, for example, right around the CA, where there's like an art exhibit and stuff like that, and kind of makes it unaccessible to residents. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Orin, or Neil, or Steve?
Sure, I think I generally agree with the fact that the university is losing money on this. I think that it's pretty, in my experience, acknowledging that I'm a little more tech-savvy than some people might be, it's pretty easy to purchase a day pass. The CA lot, you have access to with the day pass, pretty much anything you would want to access on campus, you can access with a day pass, you just go to www.edu/parking. So I really think that we should continue with it as it is for now, and use the time that we have in between signing, whether it's a year, three years, or five years, to determine next steps, instead of determining a drastic change right now.
Yeah, and I know, Orin, you have some adjacency with, you know, with your stuff, the stuff you do on campus, I think some better signage might be helpful, too, in terms of making it understood that there is day pass options, because if you, you know, if you drive down that street now, my recollection is, it's like permit parking only, like it doesn't really explain, hey, you know, these are day pass eligible, it looks like it's, you need to have one of those particular longer-term passes, so. I think there's maybe some work we could do with the university outside of the agreement to maybe improve the experience for the community, and potentially, you know, students and faculty as well.
Would that be city signage, or university signage?
The university, I think it's the university signage right now.
We'll figure it out. Well, once we figure out what we're doing here, we'll figure the signs out, I'll write it down.
I figured saving the university, saving the city a huge hassle of having to regulate the parking there, so, they're taking, the university's taking care of that for the city, so.
Neil, sorry, go ahead, Neil, do you want to repeat what you said, you kind of garbled?
Yeah, I just want to throw out there my opinion, and it may be not the same as everybody else, but I understand they're losing money, I'm sorry that's the case. Everybody, everything, prices are going up on everything. We, the city has to increase price, you know, the prices for the vehicles and maintenance of those streets, I'm sure has gone up in the same timeframe as their last contract was signed. So, they want a five-year contract, I'm fine with that, but my opinion is, let's increase the price to fifty thousand for five years. And, again, you know, Brad's group's got to plow those streets, we got to take care of them, we got to maintain them, we have to fix them. Those costs aren't going down anytime either, so, in my opinion, looking out for the best interest of the city, it's time to increase the price for that as well. Thanks.
I'd like to move approval on the original MOU with the university for five years. Reason being, I have not heard another solution that'll give us the revenue that we get with this opportunity, without a bunch of investment. And if we can figure out an investment for this street, that can make us more money, then maybe we can figure something out for the rest of the city, too.
All right, so there's a motion to approve the five-year agreement with the forty-five-thousand-dollar amount for Princeton Prairie Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Smith O., or, so we have a motion on the floor. You know, it's kind of tough, you know, kind of negotiating out in the open, but I wouldn't be opposed to Neil's suggestion of a fifty thousand dollar amount.
I can't stress enough how many times the chancellor has told me there's no more money, I just want to go on record one more time, like he looked me in the eye and said, there is no more money for this. So I don't know what's going to happen after this, but I don't think the man is misleading me. And with that, the Council can do whatever it wants, like in town, now tell him I went on record right before they started talking about changing the fee structure, and told him.
So Neil, I don't know if you had, you know, an amendment or that, but now would be the time for that, if we wanted to make any changes, to propose.
Yeah, I would amend to increase the five-year, increase it five thousand per year for five years.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, seeing no second, that motion fails for lack of.
If I can make a quick comment.
Yeah, and then we'll open up for public.
I appreciate that, that your amendment, Neil, I just, I just hate to argue over five thousand dollars, and if the chancellor's got that good of a poker hand, well, I guess, you know, I'm okay with, I'm okay with where we're at.
I'm just representing, I don't think he would be willing to send me into a meeting knowing that I will have people unhappy with me for stating it, over the five thousand dollars, unless it was an actual issue for him, in which case, I think he would have come here tonight or sent Brenda.
And he didn't know it was on?
Yeah, well, yeah.
All right, public comment, does anybody have anything on this item they'd like to speak on? All right, so the motion before us is to move, or to approve the MOU with the five years and forty-five thousand dollar contribution that the university will be making to the city. All right, any further discussion? All right, Heather, if you please call the roll.
Mike Smith.
Aye.
Orin Smith.
Aye.
Myschak.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Shannon.
Ebstein.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you, Neil.
All right, next up, we have Council request for future agenda items. Orin, did you have anything?
Not today, thank you.
All right, Greg?
No, sir.
All right, Neil?
Nope.
All right, Steve? Mike?
No.
Brian?
No.
All right, I just wanted to remind people that we are now starting our budget deliberations through the Finance Committee, so we do have a meeting, this is coming, we have one day off, and then we'll be back at it on Thursday, so if anybody's interested, that packet is online, I think we're doing, I know Economic Development and Public Works, and a couple items are on that list, and then there's a couple other meetings kind of upcoming as well. And then just, I didn't mention the string public comment, I forgot, I had written it down, it's just a big thank you to both, you know, the Treyton Run for Trey, and also the Greater Whitewater Committee for the Discover Whitewater Series, even with the new course, which isn't as-
I thought it was great.
-in the whitewater.
Start and finish is fantastic.
But, but just, you know, those are two events that I think a lot of people look forward to every year, they're always well-done. They bring a lot of publicity and that to the community, so I just wanted to express appreciation, and Jeff, if you want to say anything on-
I do, I should have said something earlier, but I had to issue it, too. The Greater Whitewater Committee and the Discover Whitewater Series will be hosting their awards ceremony on November fifth at Welbrook, where the checks will be presented to the charity partners, and all of you will be getting an invitation, and hopefully you have time that day to come and join us as we celebrate. Charity partners are really in the community, which is all about, but thank you for your support.
Sounds like a good start to the September, so, and I don't have anything else, I just want to make sure people are aware of the budget meetings coming up, and also just, I forgot to mention that earlier about those two races. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Smith O., we'll give Orin a second tonight. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
Aye.
We are adjourned?